You ready, Jason?
I'm ready, I'm here, man. Six, four.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. This meeting, the City Council, May 28, 2024. Starting with my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote. Or roll call, as you say. Sorry, no vote.
Council members, no.
Here.
Hughes, here.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Here.
Let me go play this here.
Thank you. Wanda, did we have any citizen input?
We don't have any citizen input tonight.
Okay, so we'll dispense with citizen input. The council member replied. Action on the minutes. We have minutes from the regular meeting, April 22, 2024. Is there any comment or motion approved?
Second.
That was by Mr. Wills and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next item is reports. Our own report is the financial report for the period ending March 31, 2024. And our results look pretty good compared to last year. City sales tax is up 5.5%. County sales tax is up 6.5%. Our total revenues is up 8.7%. On the expense side, expenses, operating expenses compared to last year are up 3.2%, but they're quite a bit below budget. They're 855,000 less than budget. So so far, we're squeezing our money pretty well. So I think that's helpful. So it's a good report and pretty consistent with what we've seen last year with the city and county sales tax being up. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the attendant to be read by title only.
Motion approved.
That was.
No proper motion.
Vote.
What did you say?
You said the motion's approved.
Oh.
Post-motion suspension.
It's motion on suspend.
Okay. And Mr. Wills was. That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wills. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. The next item is an ordinance, under unfinished business, requiring candidates for election to any municipal office of the city of Bellevue in addition to any other requirement of state law to file campaign contribution and expenditure reports with the Bellevue City Clerk and sufficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this is on third reading.
Okay, so this is an ordinance that I proposed actually in July. So here we are in May, and we've been patiently waiting on Attorney General's statement or ruling on this, and we have received none. And that was just as of maybe 15 minutes ago, so nothing has been posted. Just a couple comments before I propose or oppose. Just to say that, you know, I'm excited and I'm upbeat about the recent announcement of the latest Walton investment in Bellevue. Speaking for myself, I believe our community needs to refresh badly to go along with the improvements made by the POA during the last several years. And I'm hopeful that they will be mindful of our residents and intended to input that they're going to hear from our residents. So it really isn't the Walton investment that has me concerned at this point. Along with that transaction, others will be looking to capitalize on this investment, you know. So whatever the Walton's bringing, there's going to be some other people that have an opportunity to make money as well. And I'm not saying the Waltons are here to make money, but there will be an opportunity for others to capitalize on this and make money. And you know what? Say what you may, but some of those people are going to be looking for help from locally elected city officials. And I think we saw some of that through the last election cycle in 2022. We had a lot of money come into the city from outside sources. And in my humble opinion, I think some of that was questionable, and I have to ask myself why. And when I look through the campaign contribution and expense reporting, I think I found my answers. Somebody else may be able to scrub those reports and see something differently, but I really don't think they would. Now, having said that, since we haven't received Attorney General's comment, statement, decision yet, I'm going to make a motion to table this until July. The reason for July is that gives two full months, and we don't have to do this again next month. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to table to July, and we'll bring this back and have a conversation with it at that time. And even if we talk about it, decide what we want to do passive, not passive, but passive, we still have the 60 days in front of us to implement the ordinance before the actual early voting period would start.
Second.
Second, yes, Wes.
That is a motion by Doug Fowler and signed by Greg Hansel. Any discussion?
I guess I'm going to say that I'm in support of the principles that are outlined in this script. And this ordinance is presented here. I think that it provides openness for the candidates and openness for the public to view the candidates. It may require, I recognize, may require additional effort on the part of some of our staff.
Anyone else? Okay, we can have a roll call vote on the motion to table until July.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
No.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion to table to July, carry five to one. The next is a resolution expressing the opinion of the city council on nonpartisan bodies. Citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of partisan official enters campaign contributions during Bellevue's and nonpartisan municipal elections. And that also had been tabled in the past, so.
I'm going to call it up, and I'm going to make a motion to table to July as well. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote on the motion to table until July.
Councilmembers. Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
No.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
And Snow.
No.
Motion carried out four to two. So those will both be tabled until July. Under new business, first item is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Hamilton Medical in an amount not to exceed 91,000 for the purchase of five Hamilton T1 intelligent transport ventilator packages for use by the fire department. And staff recommends moving to third to final reading.
So move.
Second.
You have to make a motion.
The motion.
Within the rule of due diligence, then the rules will move to third to final.
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmembers. Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Also all rated for the third final time, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Hamilton Medical Inc. in an amount not to exceed 91,000 for the purchase of five Hamilton T1 intelligent transport ventilator packages for use by the fire department.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Before we have a roll call vote, I might mention that the reason there was no competitive bidding is because Hamilton is the only one makes, that makes this particular kind of ventilator, which the fire department felt was superior and also is replacing some ventilators that are 10 years old. And several of them, I think they can't get parts for them, so they're not able to use them. And it's just for a way of explanation for the question. People.
Do we have, are there any kind of documentation or provided to support or substantiate any time, not necessarily this particular bid, but any time that we do not take competitive bids provided? Is there documentation provided?
Yeah, normally, I mean, every situation's a little different, but normally, there's a different kind of documentation provided. In this case, it was just the fire chief indicating that no one else made a product.
There was a sole source letter that was provided.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
On this one, there was a sole source letter in the packet that said they're the ones that provide this particular type of thing. Now, in general, back themes, all right. Any waiver of competitive bidding, you have to see it's on the agenda. So if an item doesn't require bidding, then you don't see it. Or if it's more than 35,000, you would see it as a resolution. But that would not be subject to competitive bidding. So I guess to answer your question, would there be documentation when we want to buy something that is not competitively bid? If it's a situation where it has to be competitively bid, then you would see that because it would have to be lawfully waived by you by ordinance.
Okay. So anyway, we have a motion, second, and so we can go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next item is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with central independent training stations in the amount of 59,999.43 for the purchase of an air gas gauge system for use by the fire department. And I think Mr. Wills might have something to say about this.
I, in reading through the documentation that was presented, but I didn't catch it when we had the work session last week, but in the resolution, the top title part says awarding the bid. And in the section one, it says the bid is already awarded. So my language is really to resolve the conflict between the two verbiages in the current resolution. So the first section would be to recommend the bidding and a recommendation for the award to that company. And the second one is the authorization to enter into contract. So I don't know.
I can address some of that if you want.
And maybe it's not necessary, but to me, it seemed like it was a conflict.
Well, the bid, so the section one says the bid's awarded. The mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a contract. It's not saying that it's already been awarded. You are awarding it now. So the council is saying tonight, the bid's awarded. These people get it. So you haven't sent this until you've adopted the resolution. So it's not anything that's already happened in the past. So I think that that rationale is probably is not needed. I would say, in reading what you provided here, I can't recommend that the council adopt this. One reason is that in the second sentence of the first proposed new section, or of the second sentence of what you proposed to be section one, you say the award is made to the company based upon quotation dated April 1, 2024. Well, it wasn't a quote, it was a bid. So that would be inaccurate. So you were awarding the bid. They issued competitive bids, or they gave us competitive bids for it. So that is not really factually correct. And so I would just have that comment on.
The only reason for including that language, Mr. Kelly, was that there wasn't a tabulation or a listing of the bidders to conclude that this was the low bid in the documents.
So you think the fire chief was informed around?
No, I'm not saying, suggesting that at all. There wasn't a listing of a tabulation of bids that showed that this was the lowest one. The only documentation submitted was the quote, which was dated here. That may have been their bid as well, but the documentation did not reveal that.
Brian, do you want to come up with the microphone? I would say this was the only bid.
That's what I was going to say, but they're the only one to bid on this particular.
Why would you say it's microphones? Do you consider?
They're the only one that. They're the only one to bid on this particular. They were going to bid.
I understand. But the document that they submitted is a quotation.
No, like bid.
That you submitted. Well, in the packet, it's a quotation. So that may have been their bid, but it says quotation on it. Look at the packet, it says quotation, a quotation.
Sorry, do you feel that? They used that word, but it was in response to competitive bidding. It was in response to competitive bid.
Advertisement came out after the date of that quotation. Advertisement was published after that, I believe.
Well, that I can't answer. That I can't answer. So you're saying that they issued a bid before it was listed for bid?
No, I didn't say they issued a bid. I'm only saying that they sent a quote, and there were no additional bidders, but there was no evidence that they submitted a document that said, here's our bid. They only submitted that first letter based on documentation presented to us. And so that may have been the bid, but it was really a quote that came out before the advertisement was published. Look at the pieces. And I guess you're the only one that bothers? Because you're really not changing anything, but words. It, but, but. In my mind, it makes it. That's what I said. More clear. So that's why I did it.
Well, thanks for that clarification, Brian.
I'm sorry, I couldn't explain more, but I mean, it's the same way we've done.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, so any other comments?
Most to approve. Yeah, the original resolution stated.
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasn't yet. Roll call vote.
Can I get clarification? What are we, is, are we doing a command?
No. There was a motion to approve.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that nobody made a motion to approve. It was discussed, but not the motion to approve. I just want to clarify.
Okay, I guess this is a good point.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote on the resolutions.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Oh, stain.
A stain. Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried five of four, one, a stain. Next one's a resolution approving an auxiliary and part-time officer policy for the police department. Chief, you want to give a brief explanation?
Sure, sure. Like I mentioned last week, this is just a policy for auxiliary officer type position. It's in, the state allows us to do this. And basically, the point for us, the benefit for us is that we can at times take people with specific talents, IT, for example, who could help us in maybe computer forensics or phone forensics when we have computers or phones as evidence. And so we put them in auxiliary capacity so they have long force of powers in that specific area. And then we, they volunteer their time, basically. So it benefits the department, it doesn't really cost us anything. And we actually have a city employee at this time who's going to help us in that capacity in the IT departments.
Wanda can also be used. We can introduce an extra force there as well.
They could, though auxiliary's a little more focused to specific things. This is also a part-time officer policy, and that's where that would come into play is we can use part-time officers to help supplement our force when we need additional.
Okay, Chief, do you?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a lot of applicants for part-time jobs?
Say that again.
Do you have a lot of applicants for your part-time?
We've had a hard time keeping those positions full because usually when we get a good applicant in a part-time position, as soon as a full-time position opens up, they take that. And so we, I believe now we currently have one part-time officer that works for us just because he's retired, he has another career, and he doesn't want to do long force at full-time, but he still wants to sort of keep his skills up, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just stay here because the next draw.
Okay, roll call vote.
Do we have a motion?
Sorry.
A motion.
A motion, yeah.
To approve, second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote on the resolution to approve the auxiliary part-time officer.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasn't yet.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2024 city budget and approving the addition of two commissioned police officers for the police department. And the attachments show that this would change the budget in the amount of $76,000 for one half-year. Any discussion?
I don't have any discussion. I just want to clarify something in conversation we had in the work session. The chief is, we're not specifically about your department or. This is for the benefit of anyone who might have been watching the work session. And I did find out that people actually do watch it. And you know, it's like, I'm looking at the first two things we voted on. You know, those were discussed in the work session as well, so they don't get a lot of conversation here. But I mentioned the budget, right? And this is an unbudgeted item. And I know you held off and, you know, putting this in the budget. We moved it into the year. You said you were going to do that and you did some background work on it or whatever. And if this conversation could, that I brought up at the work session, could have arose from any department because it was our first non-budgeted, I think, item that we were voting on this year to approve, put into the budget, okay? And what I referred to is some work that I have done estimating what our future revenue expenses we're going to look at, look like into 2027. Because we have like a healthy reserve right now, but we also have $24 million, almost $25 million of capital project revenue that we're projecting to spend over the next, counting this year, be four years, right? And that would eat into our reserve pretty heavily. Our reserve, because I was afraid that we were going to run out of money when we were looking at the budget workshops that we had for 2024. I was just like, oh my gosh, I don't know how we're going to, I don't know how we're going to fund all this stuff. But after we were, you know, put into it, it looks like we're going to have about $3.7 million in 2027. I mean, I mean, that's projected. I mean, who really knows where we're going to be? Who knows what's going to happen in the community? But when you look at this, $76,000 for this year. But then it's like 152 without raises over the next three. That's $532,000, which would eat into that 3.7 that we're projecting we're going to have. So anytime we're approving non-budgeted items moving forward, you really need to be thinking about what we're doing, right? And again, I'm fully supportive of this, and I'll definitely vote for it, okay? But moving forward with this new investment that's going to make it all this, and we know there are going to be some things that come in front of the city and the planning department that might require, you know, additional planning, you know, employee help. So we're talking about a fire station. You do a fire station, what number five? We're going to have to staff that. So we've got to be thinking about these things. I know the man. I know the mayor is, but as a city council that's seated and part of our responsibilities is managing, you know, oversight of the budget, and we can't reach side of that. So my only comment was this is the first non-budgeted item and moving forward, we've got to be mindful of it regardless of what that non-budgeted item consideration is, and that's it. So nothing about the police department at all.
That's fair.
How this was.
You know, for the next, I said the same thing on the, for the next three years, tell me you can't have anybody because you know he's going to ask every year for somebody. And you tell him, you get these guys, you don't get nobody for the next three, and all of a sudden, it all works out. It's just that simple. And there's always openings, there's always a little extra leeway in there so you're not actually looking at the whole 150 grand. Because every time he's got an opening, somebody's not getting paid. So some of that can go for these guys. But just tell them you can't have anybody for the next three years and they're all set. There's really not a problem.
All I would say, I'm not exactly sure where you're coming from, I'm not going to turn this thing.
No, because you didn't have the part.
Projections that I did were based upon actual numbers, which takes everything into consideration you're talking about historically, okay? That they're real numbers, they're numbers that are, they're not based upon budgeted numbers and things that didn't, that didn't happen or, or, or positions that weren't fueled or whatever it might be. So, and I understand what you're saying, but, but I thought my numbers are based upon actual history of expenses and actual history of revenue, not budget. Okay? Because I understand how that all works. End of the year, we never spend our full budget. We, we try to point butter in our city and I get that. So my projections are based upon actuals, not budget projections, just for clarification, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. That was Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. And the next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group Asylums, pranks pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of one 2024 Dodge Durango all-wheel drive pursuit vehicle with equipment in an amount that exceeds $65,000 for the police department and amending the 2024 city budget.
So a couple of things, just so, so, and we talked about this last week. This, this is a state bid price for the Durango. The actual state bid price is $42,690. The, the $65,000 comes from the equipment we're going to let Superior Automotive sometimes let the outfitters cars for us because we just, the volume of cars and outfit is fully part of this area because of all the other departments that are competing with the outfitters. So that's why the, the price is $65,000, that's, that's fully outfitted with equipment. And again, this is going to come out of impact fees because of the new positions and this is just me trying to keep up with the, our current fleet and the needs of the fleet as far as, as far as vehicles. And so that's, that's where this deal is.
So this particular vehicle was at the state procurement price?
It was at the state bid price. The Durangos are currently at that state bid price, they're on the state bid list, yes.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second. That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution sitting in a public hearing for the city council on June 24, 2024 at 6:00 PM regarding vacation of a public easement on or near Gordon Hollow Road. Dana, did you want to say something about this, just a couple, few words perhaps?
So this is just a resolution to direct, wanted to set a public hearing in the weekly list of, so we can actually discuss the meat and potatoes of the actual request, which will be next month if you guys approve this. We have identified the public twice in the newspaper that we're going to be talking about, a public easement vacation. So this is just the first step for that process.
Motion to approve.
Second. That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler, thank you Dana. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
And Hughes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving application expressing support for Arkansas Department Transportation, ARDA, Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, 8020 reimbursable grant and associated Walton Family Foundation, WFF, grant for a communications, education, and outreach project related to traffic and trail safety. Justin, did you want to say a few words about this?
So like we discussed, this is basically an attempt to educate our community, drivers, cyclists, all road users on how to share the road safely. We lack a lot of infrastructure at the moment, so right now there's a lot of sharing the road going on. Some of the planning department now have actually been trying to snap pictures of people riding bikes on our various roads and last week we saw 20 people just in our commute to work and back. So it's a thing that's happening and this, this is really just an attempt to tackle it at its root and educate people on, on how to be safe with each other. Again, this is a grant, so, let's see, ARDA were asking them to cover 80% of it and that's about $82,000 roughly. And then the Walton Family Foundation has pledged to be matching funds to cover the rest, so we're not asking council for any money on this one.
Did I understand this correctly, that this is educating the bike rider and the car driver?
Correct, yeah. What we want to do is reach out to the community, all members of the community in various ways and assess what they know, what they don't know. We think a lot of the negative interactions between cars and bikes are rooted in being misinformed or uninformed. Very few of them are malicious, very few of them are, you know, intentionally nasty toward each other, but occasionally being misinformed leads to some, you know, regretful interactions, I would say. So, and certainly bikes can slow people's communities down and do lots of other things. So we want to try to teach the cyclists how to share the road with cars and then teach the drivers, okay, what happens when I approach a cyclist? How do I pass them safely? And hopefully everyone learns and everyone can be safe on our streets.
Yes.
It's a part of this to speak with the high schools around the new driver training education for young drivers. And what I'm really getting to is that young drivers are trained about the state laws and the rules of the road in Arkansas, the rules specifically state a lot about the bike rider having priorities. And so the emphasis would be is to take that message home to your parents when you learn this new skill of driving and the rules of the road so that it's something that can be integrated and brought home from the children to the parents because I think some of it is that the parents don't realize their driver education didn't include this aspect because it wasn't there.
Yeah.
And so it's a matter of trying to reach out in a number of ways, but I'm thinking that maybe the driver education programs to have that as an emphasis in there and talk with them about it to get that more of a focus for them when they're dealing with rights of the road and the bicycles.
Absolutely, I think that's critical. This particular program may not venture into that and may, you know, we can, we can see that it does. I think there's concurrently a regional program, very similar in nature, not geared toward Bellis to though, I think we're unique and require our own, but the regional one, I do think is on much larger scale and can hopefully be implemented in drivers' education courses.
Flat communities like most, most of Benton Mill as an example and a lot of Centerton, they have sidewalks and other vehicle access places for the bicycles to go. They have maybe wider pavements as well, so we're at a real disadvantage with our terrain and topography and other factors, so.
Yes, we have some unique challenges, there's no doubt about that.
Jerry Stell.
Kind of expanding on his question and Richard Brown's question. How do you propose getting this, getting this educational program out? I mean, is it going to be TV advertisement, radio, public forums, what's your plans there?
Yeah, we're planning on every avenue. News, like news interviews to try to get in front of people, inserts in the newspaper. I've thought about, what do we have driving around the city, dozens at a time, city vehicles? So I've thought, priced out some magnets to put on tailgates of city vehicles, hopefully, hoping that gets some people's attention. Social media will be a huge one. I would like to go through churches and try to contact the people through that as well. It's difficult to reach such a drastically different group of people, you know, all bell distance because we're actually fairly, surprisingly, very excited, so.
Is this going to just specifically deal with vehicles and bicycles as they relate to each other, are you going to be, um, other traffic issue?
We'll talk about pedestrians as well. Their rules are a little different than bikes. You don't see them as much on busy streets, but you do see them a lot in the unclassified streets, you know, the slowest level streets. And there are issues with them as well. I've seen a guy running down with noble yellow on Trafalgar as an example, running right in the middle, you know, and I just wanted to, I wanted to pull over and say, sir, what are you doing? You know? And all he needs is to be educated on how, on, hey, maybe, you know, what you're doing is not the safest thing, so. But we'll, and there'll also be some components about motorcycles. So vulnerable roadway users are bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorcycles. And vulnerable roadway users are the ones who are disproportionately killed or seriously injured in crashes.
If it all, anything pertains to vehicles, I would hope that there would be something about vehicles driving left of Centon and Bellis.
Yep.
Wrong side of the road, you mean, that's my dream.
Exactly. Distracted driving and speed will both be governed in it, which I think contribute to that problems.
Larry.
We have, we have another partner in this bicycle program, which is developed to Village Property Owners Association. And if we approached them to see if they would be cooperative in terms of this magnetic sign on the back of their pickups, because they have lots of work pickups in the water department.
It's a good idea. I haven't considered their trucks. I know that we, I have talked to them about promoting this program and our other programs in their facilities, so like in the new, what they call the rec, rec center. They have digital screens in a lot of their facilities that are basically slideshows, we'll put it on those, as well as they do email, emails out to all members, can be included in that. We've also talked to, the city does a texting service that goes out to people, possibly including in that as well, so. But that's a good idea. They also have a lot of trucks driving around, so.
A lot of trucks, yep. Mr. Mayor. We're voting on the application process, it's not correct. So, I mean, we'll, we'll get into the framework if we get the grant or whatever, we'll get into the framework, your plan down the road. So tonight we're just trying to get through the application and vote on that, correct? For this side of the next.
Correct, the application requires assignment.
So all the conversations about what it can be, what it could be, we'll, we'll deal with that when?
Yeah, my scope is a draft and we can, we can make changes to it. The only caveat would be potentially increased costs the more, you know, we start implementing other things, but.
Okay, I understand with that.
That's a good point, great.
Second.
That's a very good point.
Well, I was just.
Yeah.
Right along, second.
That was a motion by Craig Hansel and a second by Doug Fowler.
Sorry, well, we're asking for an 80/20 grant and in this language here, the resolution here that we're voting on, I don't know if there's dollars and cents in there or not.
We're just voting on the application.
That's right.
So they're applying.
So it's, it's an 80/20 thing that we're applying for, so.
There's a rate during the, during the, I get it, I understand.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
And Hughes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving application expressing support for Arkansas Department Transportation, ARDA, Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, 8020 reimbursable grant for Bellis away corridor planning study. Could you add a little explanation there for?
Yeah, so this is a really exciting opportunity. I think it's exciting for our whole community and it's beneficial for car drivers and cyclists alike. But the idea is to make multimodal improvements to Bellis away, specifically the possibility of bike lanes. Now, this is a grant for a study, so actually we have Aaron Bemler from Burns McDonald's here, and he may have something to add, but this is a study to decide and see, lots of public engagement, to see what the people of Bellis think the future of 71 could look like or should look like. Hopefully we can keep cyclists safe and reduce some traffic congestion at the same time. I mean, I think that's one of the ultimate goals, so.
Can I ask, would you have something you'd like to say or did you add or? Yeah, 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 I'd appreciate it. Because it's pretty exciting. Yeah, I think both of these are.
Right.
Because I know we, we kind of want to put a one, number one, and a number two behind these two agenda items.
Yep.
But I really hope they're equally considered because I think they're both really, really important. This is really exciting, exciting.
Yeah, again, my name's Aaron Bemler from McDonald's, I grew up in the area of Benton ville, I work for, so Burns McDonald's is a nationwide company with 60 offices nationwide. And this is our bread and butter for transportation when it comes to traffic. And then when you also throw in the bike and pedestrian element in the matter, how do you, how do you get everybody to work, to school safely? And I know from, from my personal experience, this is a project I'm really excited about considering I live, you know, 10 miles away in Bentonville and my family uses this corridor to get to Bellis. But the, the real opportunity is that ARDA has designated this section as a priority three route on the high-risk network, okay? So what that means is ARDA has the same interests as Bellis in making this corridor safe for the future. So from the interstate all the way up to the Missouri line, what to, what does each section of Bellis away look like and what could it look like in 30 years? And so as we look at, you know, what each neighborhood center could look like and what, how do we connect each center? How do we connect each roadway? How do we, you know, look at McNelly and what is that going to look like in 20 years? And just those sections, you know, in those areas, that is what, you know, this, this study would, would address and really prepare for, because what I was telling Justin is, you know, I love the aspect of connecting side path or sidewalk, whatever makes sense for this corridor, but what if you needed six lanes all the way up to? but what if you needed six lanes all the way up to, say, the old visitor center, the visitor center? And, you know, how do we make sure that infrastructure is built where it needs to be for the future so we're not going back and ripping anything off? So those are the kind of things that, as I'm talking to Justin and proposing, you know, what's in your packet today, is strong PI engagement, getting everybody to the table in Bell Vista, making sure everybody's voice is heard, but also putting it out there in a way that makes sense, a clear and concise manner, so that, you know, if, you know, bike lanes is what makes sense for the corridors in certain sections, great, let's look at that, see what it does to traffic, and then if that's the right answer, the right solution, then, hey, Bell Vista looked at it and public agrees, staff agrees, council agrees, everybody's coming into the table. So as far as the proposal that's in your packet, that's how we've executed in the past on projects of Tech dot, K dot. I worked for the TA Transportation Alternatives Program for K dot, you know, reviewing over 50 applications for K dot personally, looking at communities all over the state and basically saying, hey, what's safe for road vehicles and vulnerable road users and how do we, you know, actually put a good application for those projects? So would love to bring that knowledge, that experience, you know, to this quarter as well.
Yeah. So in all both these grants, I don't think it was set up for the, the first one, we talked about the educational program, which I think is sorely needed. You know, Bell Vista's kind of behind in that regard. I mean, we, there's a lot going on across the country with this, different types of transportation, particularly bicycles and things like that. But there's a 20% Walton Family Foundation matching grant that would actually cover the city's cost on that. And actually, this one from RDI, it's $310,000. The city would be obligated to $77,652, but we would apply for reimbursement. I assume that would be from the Walmart Family Foundation as well, and they did pretty good at fulfilling those requests. So hopefully, there wouldn't be any cost out of pocket if we were approved, because I know this is just for the submission of the grant here. We're not approving, you know, the study yet.
Correct. So we're going to pursue the RDI grant. At this point, we don't have a Walton matching grant for this second one, but it is something that we can, we can chase after. Just the time didn't work out for it in this particular instance, but the grant itself won't be awarded until late fall, so plenty of time between now and then to try to find some 20% match.
Larry Wilms.
My primary concern is 71 now with how the routed I-49 traffic on it allows us more accessibility for the residents who live in Bell Vista to commute to work and other activities down south. But it is a key corridor for us. We have no other north-south avenue to connect for us to get to I-49. So it's very vital and very critical that we don't compromise the ability to move vehicles on that corridor in much the same way we see it moving today, because if we do, we're going to get an uproar in the community, number one, but number two, we're going to have the issues of criticism severely for not allowing the folks to get to work, because they're going to have longer travel times.
Yes, sir.
Or more difficult travel times. And so we have people in Missouri that use 71 a great deal because it's a convenient access for them. Not everybody is close to the I-49 corridor of Pineville on West Side, so they come down the 71 corridor and join at the rounded out, the old rounded out location. So I think it's critical for us that we maintain the current speed levels that we're dealing with today on that roadway, even though some of it may not be marked, but it is, it is traveled heavily and we're only going to grow. We'll have more employment, more travel for people who are going shopping on a daily basis. So it's paramount that we maintain the capacity clearly on that corridor.
I know part of the study will be doing traffic counts at major intersections, including 279, I believe, and 71, so we can put actual R numbers on how many, how much traffic we're seeing and how people are using their hoes. And I mean, obviously, the goal would be to enhance the experience for cars as well, not just cyclists or pedestrians.
But need to do some traffic counts for bicyclists activity too.
Yeah, and I know Larry.
They're more challenging.
No, that's always a difficult feature. So I just want, I want to definitely say, you know, as part of the study, when we do a corridor study, we also take into account economic development potentials and areas that we know, you know, you've done your comprehensive plan, but also, you know, what are those, you know, areas where we want to connect and make sure that, you know, we're not just looking, you know, in a small area. We're looking, you know, nowhere to the south, what, where are people wanting to go? Where could people go and really highlight and enhance the ability for them to do that?
Howard, do you?
Well, I believe this is discussed at the work session as well, but this would not diminish any vehicle traffic. Those two lanes, north and south, would remain, say, potentially enhanced by providing safer route for other transportation, cyclists or walkers or with additional lanes for them so they're not traveling on 71 itself, which potentially would be hard.
And as part of it, just so everyone knows, I mean, when we look at, you know, intersections like Mercy Way again, McNelly, and with the, you know, exciting, you know, announcements of land purchases and things like that, what do turn lanes look like in the future? What do, you know, enhancements look like for the short term and long term? You know, we'll be putting recommendations in there as far as, you know, where is, what makes the most sense of where those active transportation, bike lanes, side paths, sidewalk, whatever those may be, put those out far enough so y'all can come in and say, hey, we need a right turn lane right here, and that's in the future. You know, we need a left turn lane here. You know, if the developer's going to do that, they come in and say, hey, we've got the space, nobody, no infrastructure's lost, and that would be the goal.
Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of any, any kind of grant money that moves this thing forward. You know, this is a lifestyle for, you know, the nation anymore, so I just think it's great, you know, the work that you guys do, and I'm in favor of anything that, you know, gets the streets safer and gets everybody educated. But, you know, with that, make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was great, Congressman Jim Wozniak. Roll call vote, motion to approve. Thank you, sir.
Councilmembers Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Chantel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
And Hughes, yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing settlement of ongoing litigation related to short-term rentals in an amount not to exceed $11,000 and amending the 2024 city budget. Jason, did you want to say a few words about this?
Well, I'm trying to feed back into the microphone first of all. We had a pretty good detailed discussion about this at the work session. I will just go through this in terms of the resolution that's in front of you, just to summarize, and I would direct anyone to our work session conversation, which I'm sure is available if you want a little more information. But as you know, we've been involved in litigation regarding our short-term rental ordinance for about a year and a half now. The plaintiffs in that suit, there are a total of 35 plaintiffs, in that case have offered to settle the litigation for an amount of $11,000. We, as a city, have maintained we have no liability to the plaintiffs and that what we have done has been constitutional. We continue with that, and I believe for that, for what it's worth, I believe that to be the case. Our latest short-term rental ordinance, the one that you adopted most recently about a year ago, the court refused to extend a restraining order against that. It was allowed to take effect and continue in effect. It is in effect now, and we are proceeding with operation under that and enforcement of that, and I think pretty successfully. But at this point in the litigation, when we start talking about the necessary costs with 35 plaintiffs and needing to proceed with discovery in this case and conducting the number of depositions, which I think would be responsible to do, to prepare for trial, which is scheduled in September, even if we bring these, each of these people in and talk to them for an hour or so, and not even particularly long, depositions, my department reached out to get some estimates of what we could expect to pay for corporate order services and time, travel, transcripts, all of that necessary part of the litigation, and we received estimates in the range of $12,000 to $15,000. And those are estimates, it could be more, it could be less, but we know we're looking at that range. So given that, and you have an offer to settle for $11,000, you'd have to look very seriously at that. So therefore, you know, continuing to defend the litigation, given that there are uncertainties, given that there would, could, it's possibly going to be an appeal, no matter really how this turns out, to Supreme Court, we have to look at what's best, in the best interest of the taxpayers, and when you can bring a lawsuit to settlement without any acknowledgement of liability, without any change to your new ordinance, and basically what would be a best-case scenario if you proceed to the end of this case, and you can do that for less than what you know to be the cost of the litigation, it's really, it's a sound financial decision. So that's, that's really what's been presented to you. So what this resolution does is it authorizes the mayor to settle the litigation for an amount not to exceed $11,000, upon condition the city maintains no liability to the plaintiffs. And that would be clearly laid out in a, in a settlement agreement, which would have to be drafted and agreed upon. And then in terms of the money, you are amending the current year budget to take that $11,000 out of the, basically out of the piggy bank and authorizing it to be paid. So that's what the budget amendment is about. That's what this is. So how this relates to the second, the item J, I'll go ahead and just tell you that. If you decide you do not wish to take the settlement, then obviously we need to have more money to litigate the case, and that's what J is about. If you do agree to settle, then we don't need J and we would be asking you to table that, but that's where it is.
I'll get you in a second, Wendy. I wanted to mention one thing that Jason mentioned to me in the office that I thought was important. He said, you know, this is a resolution authorizing settlement, but there's still documents that come after that and it could not happen. You're not authorizing us to go do it, and we could end up not having, being able to agree on the documents, so I just wanted to.
That's my question. Like, these are potential, we'd say, yes, authorize this, we go for it, and they say, we don't accept.
If we can't reach, I don't foresee this, but who knows with this case? If we're unable to reach an agreement, a basic settlement, which is kind of a standard agreement, where it releases everyone, no one claims any liability, money is paid and everyone walks away, which is basically what a basic settlement agreement would be, if we can't reach terms on that, I wouldn't advise the mayor to do that, the case is not going to be settled, and we'll proceed. If that were to happen, I would come back to you next month and ask for some more money, but I, you know, there's still going to have to be an agreement on actually settling documents, but it's going to involve us paying $11,000 and not admitting liability, which is the main part of it.
And our existing ordinance would still continue to exist. Greg.
The only thing I would, I know it was discussed in the work session, and I just wanted to make sure that it was stated at council. I mean, there's no admission of liability, wrongdoing, nothing, so I mean, this is...
And they would dismiss their case with prejudice, which means it can't be brought back.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to have it said in this. Go ahead.
Me or you?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, when this was first proposed, I would have said I was strongly opposed to committing any type of settlement initially. I, since, you know, sat down and refought my position and my way through it, Jason made a lot of really good points during the work session. You know, there are a couple of things. First of all, I believe that this will probably end up back at the Arkansas State Legislature to some degree. Maybe it won't, I don't know for sure. So I think short-term owners know that probably what we have will stay because SB 197 was relatively close to what our ordinance is right now. And I was, I'm probably closer to this than anyone because I went down to the Arkansas State Legislature and testified before the city county public affairs committee, which voted to not vacate but not support SB 197, by one vote, I might add. So anyway, I believe if it comes back, it'll probably be right along the lines of something of what we have right here, right now, and our short-term, plaintiffs know that. And also, you know, they would have to prove that they've been damaged in some way, and I don't believe that they would be able to prove that. I don't think they have been damaged.
Let me add, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me just add something there. It is our position that the law does not allow them to get damages against us. Even if, even if they could prove some damage, the law does not allow them to collect damages in this sort of a circumstance. So we would be debating then whether they could even try to prove it if we went to court.
So initially, I mean, I personally believe we have a very strong position. Having said that, since the ordinance adoption, complaints have greatly declined, quite frankly. I mean, I was, I was called and emailed constantly before we put this ordinance in play. And honestly, since it has been, I'm just trying to think, I have one, one individual that does continue to contact me, so I don't want to say I have received no complaints. That wouldn't be true, there's one, and I, if I said I haven't received any, I'd probably get a call tonight. So complaints have greatly diminished. So this, I think this ordinance has had a positive impact, an impact for our residents. I was really surprised to find out in the work session that 17 of the plaintiffs that are listed on the lawsuit have actually acquired permits. I really didn't expect to see that. Seven, and Taylor and I were looking at it before the meeting, have not, but I would advise them to, you know, in the pretty near future, but I was pleasantly surprised to see that. I am also the chair for the city's AMP Commission, Discover Bell Vista. We collect a 1% prepared food tax, and we also collect a 2% occupancy tax for short-term rentals. Our occupancy tax, just this year, I can't quote it all the way back to the implementation of the ordinance, but just this year, all four months year-to-date have greatly increased in the collection of that tax, which means, you know, so whenever a short-term rental owner applies for a permit, they have to prove, you know, that they have been paying their taxes, which means, you know, we're going to get this, we've got, we've got to make sure we're paying our taxes. So it's had a positive impact in that regard. It's up, it's up 56%, April year-to-date over prior year, that tax collection. And I want you to know that the AMP Commission, so we're responsible for marketing, branding and promoting Bell Vista, but we also support the Fourth of July Parade financially. We support the Fourth of July fireworks financially, and we also are supporting the Northwest Arkansas Festival that's going to be taking place, you know, that took the place of the Arts and Crafts Festival, as in October this year, I believe. So that money, that collection is going to support residents of Bell Vista and some good things that happen within the community. To Jason's point, another one, you know, we face increasing costs of the depositions, you know, for the litigation, and also the final decision, this, the final decision by the court has some uncertainty built in there, because I went to two or three court sessions and I was kind of surprised at what happened. So that's, that's kind of something we don't really know. So I think rather than risk, you know, any, anything further in the future, it may not occur, but it could occur, I think the best position for the city is to go ahead and accept this settlement and let both sides put this behind us and move forward. You know, it's gone on long enough. We've been having this conversation about short-term rental ordinance for two years and a month, two years and two months. So it's just, it's time, it's time to move on before I think of both of us.
Motion to approve.
That was Jim Wozniak and Jerry Snow, but Larry Wilms was like, wait, go ahead.
I guess I have some apprehension that since we have no liability... I guess I have some apprehension that it says we have no liability by this agreement, yet we're admitting and paying them $11,000 and being a leader.
We are not admitting, we are not admitting, we wouldn't agree to do it.
Well, who gives the $11,000?
Well, then, but that's a thing that I mean, conveniently, basically for our convenience, it's a payment, but that, there's no admission of any liability or wrongdoing.
But I appreciate.
They're, but they get, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
I appreciate, simply the symbolism of giving them money suggests that maybe we're, we're settling for a fee. So I, I, I really object to that concept. I would have been much more comfortable with it if it said no fee in the settlement. But beyond that, I think, I think the reality is, is that, and so, Counselor Fowler stated it, is that we run the risk, if we continue to litigate, we run the risk of being in litigation after the state legislature is acted to repeal all of this stuff anyway. And so we could end up being in court, I'm assuming, because of litigation if we chose not to settle this way, and they appealed or whatever, and then the state legislature goes their way, which I'm fairly confident are going to be moving very strongly in the direction of passing legislation 197, I think it is.
As far as from the last session.
I think, I think that'll come back with, with a vengeance, from what I can tell from the folks that I've talked to within the legislature. Whether it's successful or not is another question, but I think some of that depends upon our, our ability, not necessarily Bellavista, but the communities that have this kind of ruling on short-term rentals, and the state, the Arkansas Municipal League are ready to pounce on this thing and organized to pounce on it so that it comes up to a hearing at the Senate or the House. We're ready to be there first thing in the morning to, to present our case. So I think there's a lot of things that hinge upon whether or not the state legislature is successful, and maybe even if we're prepared, they may, may still choose to pass legislation that handcuffs us in this rule. And so the other thing I guess I'm just wondering then is that we've known that we have seven permits, litigators on, on the other side here that own property that do not have proper S T R permits, that I think we're remiss and negligent in enforcement of those. And if they are on and off the list from month to month, well, if they've been on there and then they're off, the next time you see them on there, they get a ticket right away. They get enforcement action right away as soon as you see them the second time on. I think we need to be, I think we need to be a little aggressive and a little forthright about enforcing the fact that if you have an S T R in Bellavista, you need to be licensed. And whether you're on or off the ticket with whatever rental firm you're using to, to do it, if you're, if you go off, well, then they say, well, we're not renting, okay, but as soon as we see you back on there, you're going to get a ticket that, because you don't have your permit. So I, I, I think there are things that we need to do, frankly, relative to this subject. I will support the action on this, this motion, but I think we need to do our homework, and we need to get our act together as well.
Tam, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to correct the record, but it's not seven, it's five. There are only five as of May 1st, so they're not full of the permit that have been identified. There are four on them. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
So we have two, two more that have picked up permits, which is now.
We've had one more. The original number of six did not have a permit, and one was on, on May 1st, or before May 1st, just took it off their listing, and so they came into compliance by removing the listing.
So the group of litigants that we have on the other side here only own how many properties collectively? How many do they represent collectively?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that because of the echoing.
Oh, the litigants, the 30-some people that are the litigants, how many properties do they collectively own?
I could have had that number for you, but I don't know the number off the top of my head. There are several of those 35 that are co-owners or spouses that own property together, but so there are 35 short-term rentals there. I would say it's around 20 or so, because there are a lot of them that are joint, but I, again, I don't have that number in front of me to tell you with accuracy.
And there may be some multiple properties amongst the group, too?
There are. There could be.
So. So I guess, I guess my, my concern is, is that we need to be aggressive in, in enforcing the fact that they're out, and then they back off, they're not on the list, the next time they show up on the list, they get the ticket right away without anything.
My understanding is we have been making some moves on the enforcement side.
Yeah, we've, we've actually brought in a lot into compliance since May 1st. That was our last attempt that we had, reaching out, bringing people, a compliance attempt. We have, I can't tell you the exact number, but our numbers jumped quite a bit since May 1st, and we're currently sitting at 445 issued out of 579 that we have identified. So we, that was sitting well below, we're around 400. So we've made quite a jump in just the last two or three weeks.
Issuing a couple of tickets will make that go much quicker.
I'm not the ticket issuer.
Now, this was S T R report on May 24th. We have 579 listings identified by Granite, 445 permits issued, 406 permits issued toward the 600-unit cap, 380 units on subject systems, and 129 units with more bedrooms and a subject permit. I just thought I'd go on the backside of that. So that's where we stand.
Well, I want to mention, according to my calculations, I believe the permit fees have been more than $60,000 for the people who comply. So, you know, I have the feeling that paying $11,000, we're not guilty of anything, but we have collected more than $60,000, so. You know, we have a motion by Mr. Wozniak, second by Mr. Snow, so we'll go vote.
Council members Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wozniak.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Jason, I believe we need to table the next item.
I would ask you to go ahead and move to table definitely item J.
Motion table. Second.
That's Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler.
Do you need to read it?
No.
Okay.
We'll go vote.
Council members Snow.
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wozniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
I'll give you the signature copy later.
On the announcements, next city council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, June 17 at Bellavista Police Training Room. Next city council regre remaining is 6:00 PM, Monday, June 24, at Bellavista District Court. Planning Commission work session is 4:30 PM Thursday, May 30, at Bellavista District Court. And Planning Commission regre remaining is 4:30 PM on Monday, June 10, 2024, at District Court. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.